I'd like to call this meeting in the March 17th, New York City Council Award. I'll just call the hall.
Mr. Cost.
Here.
Mrs. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Guthrie.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Marmy.
Present.
Mrs. Loomis.
Mr. Rath.
Here.
Mr. Roletta.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
And Mr. Buck.
Here.
We have everyone either here or present, etc. I'd like to welcome the students tonight. It's always good to see you. Nice to see young, smiling faces. That's always fun. Next on the agenda this evening, we have the invocation by Mr. Johnson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, on this day, we're aware of your presence among us. Be with us in our deliberations. Care for the infirm and oppressed. Bless our citizens and grant them help and courage in their many situations and needs. And we thank you for this day and for your presence among us. In your name, amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to defy the United States of America and as the republic forward extends, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next, we have caucus. That's a time for council to discuss anything that may be pertinent to the agenda this evening. Do we have anything? Next, we have an approval of the minutes for the March 3rd, 2014 council meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Rath.
Second.
Second by Mr. Buck. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. We have three reports of standing committees this evening. We have one from Finance, one from Safety, and one from Service. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Next, reports from city officials. We have one from our auditor, Stephen Johnson, one from Bart Jobes, the Tax Administrator, and one from Chief Sarver. Again, without objections, those will also be received and filed. Under Communications this evening, first, we have Mayor Hall with a proclamation this evening.
Good. Thank you, Mayor Hall. There's Rose and Lisa here. Will you help me up, please? Thank you. And is Heather joining us here or not? Okay. You're on the camera. Okay. I want you guys to come right back up there, please. Thank you. Welcome to here. I'll get you a picture here or something. Whereas during the month of March, the Lincoln County Board of Developmental Disabilities encourages everyone to get to know one of the 1,500-plus people in Lincoln County who have developmental disabilities and to discover that he or she has all that he or she has to offer to our community. And whereas the theme for the 2014 Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month of March is "Ability at Work," whereas individuals with developmental disabilities, their families, their friends, neighbors, and coworkers encourage everyone to focus on the abilities of all people. And whereas the most effective way to increase this awareness is through everyone's active participation in community activities and the openness to learn and acknowledge each individual's contribution. And whereas every individual, regardless of ability, has valuable strengths, endless capacity to learn, and the potential to make important contributions to the local communities. Now therefore, I, Jeff Hall, Mayor of the City of Newark, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2014 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Newark, Ohio, and urge all citizens to take the time to get to know someone with disability, recognize ability at work, and to see what he or she has to offer. Thank you. Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Also, under Communications, we have a letter from Chad and Kristy Hill discussing the Florida Nation, the Florida and our water. That'll also be received and filed. Next this evening, we have comments from citizens. There are two opportunities for comments from citizens tonight. One is before the legislation and one is after. While we ask, put your hand up so I can recognize you. Come forward, give us your name and address. Please be respectful and I'll make sure you're treated with respect. Mr. Butcher.
My name is Quinn Butcher, 129 West Main Street. I've got a question for you. They have been building that school across the street from me. I'd like to know what the city's going to do about it. And it's been there since for about a whole month, or week or two, or year or two, vacant. I see a lot on there. I don't think it should be light and set up going on. But I'd like to know what they're going to be doing with that. And my top ten forecast was to set them are high mid to 60s. But I am looking at one of them, high in the mid to upper 60s. I guess so. They have to welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Butcher. I do know Mr. Lamb is planning on building apartments in that building.
He is?
Yes.
Okay.
That's his plan. Anyone else for this first section? Mr. Gibney?
Pete Gibney, 1335 Krebs Drive, Newark. The only thing I have tonight in reading through what you're going to look at is number 14-30, one of the back under resolutions on the first reading. And I'm a little curious to know how the placement of farmland in agricultural district meets the criteria for declaring an emergency, unless you're going to benefit somebody personally. Do you care to give me any answer to that?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gibney.
Ron DeLumis, 870 West Church Street. I'm channeling Pete Gibney. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. Last, well, Saturday, March the 8th, I was reading the Columbus Dispatch, and when I came to committee meetings last Monday, I asked the committee chair if I could ask this question, and I was told no. I would have to ask Steve Johnson. Unfortunately, this isn't a public records requirement. It's something that doesn't exist. It's just a simple question. So I'll ask it in front of everybody. Mayor Coleman in the City of Columbus did a study on what's called the Cadillac Tax that has to do with the Affordable Care Act. And they are doing projections for their expenditures for the City of Columbus, which I think is something obviously finance does do or should do. And it looks like it's going to hit them to the tune of $5 million to $8 million. So I was asking, or wanted to ask, if the Finance Committee could look to see if the Cadillac Tax is something that's going to hit our city as well. It's 40 cents per dollar, per premium dollar, per employee. So if you have a family policy that's $12,500 a year, the city could be on the hook for 40 cents for every one of those premium dollars per person. So that was it. It was simple, and it was quick, and that was all I wanted to ask. But I had to ask everybody because I was not allowed to ask during Finance. I just want to thank Mayor Hall for the proclamation to the Developmental Disabilities Board. It's something that's very near and dear to my heart. It's good to see some of those people. I haven't seen them since my daughter passed. That was very nice. And that, I'm done. I don't talk to them anymore.
Anyone else for this first section? Okay. Ordinance is on the first reading, 14-03. Are we ready?
Yep. Ordinance 14-03 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rath, and ordinance annexing certain territory generally described as being .275 acres, more or less, Lot 26 in Van Tassel, Mount Vernon Road allotment, located in North Township to the City of Newark, Ohio.
14-03 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 14-05.
Ordinance 14-05 by Mr. Cost and Mr. Rath, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 1567 West Main Street, City of Newark, Lincoln County, Ohio, from that of G.O., General Office District, to L.D., Limited Intensity Business District.
14-05 will be referred to the Planning Commission for hearing. Next, we have resolutions on a second reading, 14-14.
Resolution 14-14 by Mr. Blake, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, and Mr. Rath, a resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporation.
Refer to the second reading of 14-14. What does you wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Blake, I'm moved to adopt a 14-14.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. We have a discussion on 14-14. I'll just call the whole vote.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
And Mr. Buck.
Yes.
14-14 has passed. Next, resolutions on the first reading, 14-17.
Resolution 14-17 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, and Mr. Rath, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Newark to apply for funding from the United States Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, under the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Program.
14-17 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 14-18.
Resolution 14-18 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rath, a resolution appropriating and disappropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Mr. Blake.
Mr. President, new bill waves two-day reading rule.
Second.
Move away the two-day reading rule by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. I'll please call the whole, wave the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
And Mr. Buck.
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mr. Blake.
Mr. President, move to adopt 14-18.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 14-18? See, now, I'll please call the whole vote.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
No.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
And Mr. Buck.
Yes.
14-15 has passed. Next, we have 14-19.
Resolution 14-19 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmy, and Mr. Rath, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service of the City of Newark, Ohio, to negotiate and enter into contract to provide sanitary sewer service to the Village of St. Louisville within the North Ford Segments Sewer District.
14-19 to be held for a second reading. Next, we have 14-20.
Resolution 14-20 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rath, a resolution approving the renewal application for placement of farmland in an agricultural district and declaring an emergency.
You refer to the first reading, 14-20, although it is an emergency. What does you wish?
Motion.
Mr. Cost. Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Buck. Is there any discussion on 14-20? Mr. Cost.
And in comment and part to answer your question, Pete, my understanding, and I want to make sure I've got this right, is that we found ourselves in a deadline to approve this by a certain date, within a certain timeframe. And I want to make sure that I'm correct on, with the emergency.
I'd probably phrase it slightly differently.
That's why I was looking at you and asking.
Because I generally tend to do.
Yes, sir.
I wouldn't say that we find ourselves in that position. We're statutorily mandated and subject to the timeframe that requires us to do this as an emergency so that it takes effect within the timeframe prescribed by the higher level.
Thank you, Mr. Sassen.
I guess I just said the same thing.
You did. It's so much better. We find ourselves having a similar answer.
Anyone else on 14-20? I'll please call the whole vote.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
And Mr. Buck.
Yes.
14-20 has passed. Next, we have 14-21.
Resolution 14-21 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Rath, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to accept bids and sell certain surplus personal property now owned by the City of Newark, Ohio, and declaring that such property is no longer needed for any municipal purpose.
14-21 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 14-22.
Resolution 14-22 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, and Mr. Rath, a resolution appropriating money for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
14-22 to be held for two weeks for a second. And that concludes our legislation this evening. Thank you. Next, we have our second section, the citizens' comments. Anyone? I'll sit up for you.
Quinn Butcher, 129 West Main Street. A couple days ago, I seen, I know made comments on this quite a few times, quite a few months back, I seen an emergency vehicle with its lights and sound going. The car comes down West Main Street, almost in that vehicle. And you know for a fact that emergency vehicle has lights and sound going. That really made me really mad when that vehicle were right in front of that emergency vehicle, because that emergency vehicle has red lights on. And I know what the city's going to do about these speeders going up and down West Main Street. But it passed.
Thank you, Quinn. Anyone from the government class? Okay. That was your team. Anyone from the cabinet this evening? Esteemed Mr. Johnson, our auditor.
I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Our bold Mr. Sassen.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's nice to see the high school government class here today. I will have to admit, however, that I am a little disappointed that Mrs. Grindrod didn't take advantage of the citizen comment portion of the agenda to renew our debate on the relative merits of the Electoral College. But I'm going to have to save that for another day. I know it will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Sassen. Mayor Hall.
Yes, also welcome old students. So as you know, last week was committees, so that's where a lot of this legislation originated, and there was a lot of discussion up here on it. And tonight might seem kind of a whirlwind on some of these items, but we have First and Third as council, and Second and Fourth as committees. So that's where a little bit of dialogue is on some of these issues, along with through the week, as people want to know things. Operation Feed is in full swing this month, and surely our Lincoln County Food Pantry does some wonderful things to get food in people's stomachs that do not have food. And that's a great way to try to make it a better community, encourage everyone to try to help donate to that if they can. Big Brothers, Big Sisters had their bowling for kids on Saturday. They were there for four, five hours. They raised over $100,000. Never ceases to amaze me what this community does to help the citizens. And certainly, I think all children need someone to look up to, to, you know, increase their odds of having a one in their life. So I also want to congratulate Melanie Engel and Travis Delancy, two Newark Police Department detectives, and also for their, well, they got received the Red Cross Heroes Award at a event last week for the work they did with the Ohio Boys Gang that they brought in, the information they collected, and got those participants in prison because they needed to be. And then also, Newark Fire Department Safety Firefighter Greg Kaufman that goes out in the community. And as we quite often say, the best fire is the fire that never started. So prevention is possible on fires. Greg is considering retirement after 35 years, I believe it is, in the City of Newark, which is kind of bittersweet for him, but has done some great things. So congratulations. I was quite proud as a mayor as they accepted those awards. And just as a footnote, too, they also honored the two children, the citizens that were involved in the Hollander Pool lifesafe. And they were there, too, and quite a nice breakfast with the Red Cross. With that, I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Cost.
I'd also like to welcome Mrs. Grindrod and her students. It's nice to see you all here, and we hope you enjoy your experience here. It was certainly nice to read the advocate that we've got new businesses and apartments coming to South Third Street. That surely is encouraging. We'd like to see that be a good start for downtown Newark. And I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Cost. Mrs. Floyd.
I too would like to welcome the government class and Mrs. Grindrod as a retired ninth grade civics teacher, which was a sort of government economics class. I like to see people participate in government and always encourage my students to do so. So welcome and take this seriously. This is basically, the things government does, and particularly at the local level, affect you directly, very directly. And so consider that. I'd like to thank Bill Spurgeon and David Rhodes. They've helped me on a number of issues in the Seventh Ward, and I appreciate that. And finally, I called in How to Shell today, the former First Ward Council member, just to see how he's doing. And I think he's sort of doing fair. It turns out, when he had his surgery, when he was in the hospital, he had a stroke while he was in there. And so it's still going to be a couple weeks before he can drive. He would like to come sometime, just sort of to see everybody. I asked how the heart valve was working, and I guess it's not. So, but he said he would be happy to hear from anybody. So if anybody has a minute sometime, just give him a call and say, "Just thinking about you," I'm sure he'd appreciate that. And with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, I too want to recognize the government students. To the chagrin of some of my friends in politics, this is my 40th year since I was elected the first time. And high school government class was really, really crucial in developing my interest in government. My government teacher's name was Dan Dups, who went on to spend several years as Mayor Heath and superintendent of city schools. And it just had a real impact on my life, and I hope that it is on yours. You know, you've got a new key club there, Newark High School, which I think is a great public service organization. I encourage you to get involved, or encourage your junior and sophomore friends to get involved. So that's a great thing. The, a couple other things I wanted to mention. The mayor rightfully recognized with the proclamation, developmental disabilities. We have a developmental disability levy coming up in May, and folks need to start focusing on that because it's important for a lot of folks in our community that aren't blessed with perfect health and need opportunities similar to the opportunities that we have. I wanted to thank the mayor for, he had a really nice event for Operation Feed last week here at City Hall. I hope he ended up having a great turnout, made some good money on that. And I wanted to thank Lisa Best. She gave me this book to look at, this storybook of memories in Lincoln County, Newark. And boy, everybody needs to have a chance to look at this because this has got some wonderful old pictures. And I was looking at an old article from the Lincoln County, and it just reminded me of something I try to mention about every year, that New York did, we did produce a president, and that was the fifth president of Liberia, James Edward Roy, who was actually resided up on Mount Vernon Road, was a barber. And there's a couple different histories about him, but everything I've read about him, I felt real good and real proud to know that Newark, Ohio, produced a president in Liberia, Africa. And one thing about Liberia, if you ever go study it a little bit, you'll see that they have mimicked our democracy. Their flag, lots of ships fly under the Liberian flag, and they fly with a flag that looks like the US flag, only with one star. So, welcome. And I just also wanted to mention a guy that has, I think he makes a great contribution to our community. His name is Jerry Satterfield. Jerry writes almost weekly in The Advocate. He writes columns about the history of our community, and it's really worth reading them. They're just a lot of fun to read, and sometimes he's in there a couple, three times a week. And I'm just really grateful that he does that as a volunteer to highlight the history of our community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. A lot of us down here thought it was a lot longer than 40 years, but. Ms. Hall.
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to thank Joe Paul, the Maintenance Department, and George. Those guys have got their hands full, and they had a couple issues in the first ward, and they've just been right there very quickly to take care of some things. So just wanted to thank them.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. Johnson.
I too want to welcome the government class. Of course, there's nothing more important than citizen participation in government. And it's always hard to follow everybody. Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Guthrie always have a lot to say, and I did love them.
Thank you. Very much, you'll be first, Mr. Johnson.
No. Thank you.
Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to also welcome the government class, and we've had someone already become a president from Newark, and maybe one of you someday will become president or be involved in some capacity that we can look back on this as maybe your start. So, but get involved, educate yourself on the government process, and the best way to educate yourself is by getting involved in attending meetings like this or other events that involve government. I want to wish everybody a Happy Saint Patrick's Day. I would have worn green, but Mrs. Floyd took all mine. Everybody enjoy your day.
Thank you. I guess I'll start off with saying Happy Saint Patrick's Day. Happy Saint Patrick's Day, and I will let you know that Saint Patrick was Italian. Just say it. I want to welcome the government class as well. I don't want to be the first one to forget that, so welcome to the meeting. And it is important to get involved and educate yourself in the local government. Like Miss Floyd said, the things that we do up here affect you guys directly. And probably the lowest amount of involvement that you guys can do, then is your right, but I believe it's also your duty, and that is, when you turn 18, register to vote, and when the elections come along, vote. Actually, vote. Go to vote. So educate yourselves as to who you're going to vote for as far as candidates, and how you're going to vote on issues. But at least get involved that way, and please make sure you exercise your right to vote. I was going to come to Mr. Guthrie's defense and ask if there were any pictures of Don in that book, but I'll pass on.
Thank you, Mr. Rath.
This last week, we had a quarterly mobility meeting, and there was an article in the newspaper about the trails and things that they're doing with that. Sandy Maple reported that they do have a rough draft of what they're going to be doing for the trails. They called it a technical draft. I guess it's the same thing as a rough draft. But they will have a formal draft available on March 31st. There'll be a copy of that, if anybody's interested, at the library. And they're also going to be holding an open house public meeting for question and answer. She didn't tell us when that was going to be, or I'd let you know, but I did want to let you know about that. Participated in the Big Brothers, Big Sisters Bowl-a-thon on Saturday, and bowled the best game of bowl in a long, long time. I'm not going to tell you how that was because it wasn't that great, but it was great for me.
Was it over 100?
It was.
Okay.
It was. Somebody actually made a comment about my bowling, and they told me to bowl straight. I said my goal for bowling was the same it was for golf, to break 100. And I did that, so that was good. But it was a lot of fun, and we did, had a good time, and we did raise a lot of money. And my gosh, it's amazing when you go there because there's no place to park. The place just gets absolutely packed, so that the amount of participation in that is overwhelming. So, but it's a lot of fun. And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Ratt. Mr. Roletta?
Thank you, Mr. President. I as well would like to welcome Mrs. Grindrod's government class. A 10th grade project actually helped get me interested in government, so it really pleases me to see you all here. I'd also like to call the Safety Committee meeting, and with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Roletta. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, I just want to also welcome the students and Mrs. Grindrod to the council tonight. I got elected last November, and one of the first meetings I had with our mayor was to discuss a youth council. And so when we finally get things rolling with that, then perhaps we'll be reaching out to you to see if any of your students want to participate. When I was in high school, Mayor Frank Stare was presiding over the city at the time, and he had a youth council which got several members of our teenagers to help in the community. So perhaps that's something we could work on in the future, so look forward to that. We, I guess it was last week, we sort of touched base on that again, so hopefully get that rolling soon. Do want to announce that we do have our, the South Newark Civic Association Dinner is tomorrow, Ben Franklin at 6:00, and Adam Weinberg, President Dennison will be speaking. The Newark High School Swing Choir will be performing for everyone, and all are welcome to come. And then I also want to recognize Everett with the Lincoln County Computer Society, and also our clerk, Autumn. I don't know if you've noticed yet or not, but all of our proceedings have been placed onto a YouTube channel. And so, you know, people have been giving me a little grief about making people speak at this podium, but those, when you can go back and watch those video sessions, it's very nice to be able to hear people clearly and everything. So I want to thank Autumn and Everett for making that YouTube channel happen. Joe, you still need to get it up on the Advocate website, so maybe you can help us with that. But I know you sent an email to them about that, but I do want to thank Everett and Autumn for coordinating, getting those videos uploaded and everything. I need to call Finance Committee meeting for the 31st, and with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Mr. Buck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to welcome all the students. Mrs. Grindrod from Newark High School, thank you for coming this evening. Need to call Ways and Means Committee meeting for Monday. With that, I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buck. There'll be no meetings next Monday as it's a five-month month, so we will not have a meeting on March 24th. Our next committee meeting will be on March 31st at 5:30 right here in this room. Our next full council meeting will be April 7th at 7:00. Thank you all for coming. We appreciate it. It's your whole city council, so thanks for being involved.